Okay, so welcome to our September work session. And we will jump right in with committee reports, budget, finance, and facilities.
The Budget, Finance, and Facilities Committee has not met since our last report. We meet this next Tuesday, I believe, right? Tuesday? Yeah, Tuesday evening.
Thank you. And Vice President Anderson is joining us online. And Board Member Allred may be joining us online. And our Business Administrator will be a few minutes late. So now we'll turn time over to Board Member Burnell for Student Achievement.
Thank you, President. So the Student Achievement Committee just met, and again, that is made up of Board President Joyce Wilson, and Board Member Jamie Nunley, and myself. We had a presentation by Janine Montgomery, who is the Secondary Math Specialist. And she also was representing Dr. Lisa Welch-Bond, who couldn't be present. But they were talking about district-wide, how we have the need to improve math competency. And so we have this coordinated effort that we're going to start undertaking. And Adam's watching me because he knows I'm like, I'm going to get up here and I'm going to forget everything we just talked about. And Adam's like, don't worry, I got you. So thank you, Adam. So we did get awarded a two-year grant from the STEM Action Center that we will be using to move forward with this math growth initiative. The timeline for that will be, sorry, I've got my digital notes and my handwritten notes. We're going to focus on building a shared vision with administrators and instructional coaches. We have a book called Principles to Actions. Is that the, and there was like a subtext to it. But anyway, so we're going to be doing, the leaders are going to be doing a book study on that. They're going to be doing professional learning on effective math teaching practices, and then focused classroom observations. And then for the 2026-27 school year, which will be year two, we're going to focus on deepening work with teachers and instructional coaches. We will be building teacher leadership and continuing use of the Principles to Actions as a framework for effective practice. I love the basis of this is that we want to build STEM identity. And really, this idea that everyone can do math. We want all of our students to recognize that they have this ability because we know that oftentimes math is this kind of stigma. Like, we just say, I'm not good at math. I don't know how to do math. And so we either kind of let it slide and say, oh, well, we're just, they're just not good at math. And we want to shift that culture. So I'm really excited that we have this district-wide effort to do that. And it's going to teach our students to think critically versus just memorization. They're going to be developing a deep understanding. And also that we're focusing on equity and access for all learners. There's going to be five sessions of leader learning. And then at the end of this year, we're going to be, all of the schools will be creating their math goals for 26-27. So that was part one of our meeting. And then Adam McMillan gave us an update on the implementation of our new curricula. So we have the Amplify that we just rolled out this year. And it is being received overwhelmingly positive. So the feedback that we got is that it's hard work upfront, as you know, change is typically hard anyway, but that the teachers are really loving it. So we're happy to hear that, that we're getting overwhelmingly positive feedback there. And then for secondary, we've got the Common Lit 360 curriculum. And this was, I think, the way Adam put it, is that the teachers got what they wanted. Like, this was the curriculum that they wanted. So yeah, those were our updates. And I don't, was there anything that I missed?
No, it just came up that we were going to do these math trainings from two to four on Monday with some of our leader learnings. But just an invitation to the board, we, most Mondays, we have leader learning with our leaders. It's mostly in the PDC, and I can send out a schedule for when those are. But you're invited to come to any of those that you want to. You can stay for five minutes, 10 minutes, hour, whatever you want to do. Sometimes it'll be leadership development. Sometimes it's going to be what we just talked about. Sometimes it's going to be, you know, diving deep into their school plans and doing root cause analysis and looking at their data. Sometimes it's going to be talent development with Jessica and what we're doing to keep people. Sometimes it's going to be Nicole working on PBSS goals, maybe some accreditation. It just could, it just, the topics vary. But if you guys, you know, you're always invited to whatever you want to be at. But that's a really good snapshot to see what administrators are diving into and what they're working on. So just kind of a standing invitation. Pop in if you want, don't if you don't. It's totally up to you.
I had a question that kind of goes with this because you talked about the math initiative. I heard through the grapevine, and I don't know how reliable the source is, that the state is reviewing math standards, correct?
Yes, and I think that might be a good place for you to, for Adam. Because that was, it's a very extensive process. And so he can, yeah, we did talk about that, too.
They're in the process right now of receiving public comment. So that's several stages along the way to final approval by the board. Speaking with Janine, as she's in touch with the state mathematics team, they anticipate, my understanding was by December, having board approval. And then, once you receive full board approval, getting that information to districts and charters, then you phase it in, you have an implementation year. And then the following year would be our accountability year where the assessments would start kicking in. Right now, we're just waiting and seeing how the school board receives the public input and whether they move forward. From what I've heard, we, they're a little delayed already, but I don't anticipate much more delay.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think Janine did say they're right at the very end of that 90-day review.
Right, so they've got open houses. We have an open house here.
Okay, so Policy and Law, we met, there's my friend, August 22nd. Feels like so long ago. But, and I just had a glance, I think we looked at at least 10 different policies that day. So 3.111, which is financial reserves/fund balances. And that was to add legal references, or update legal references, and Moody ratings, which I don't know what they're called, but I remember some teams from here going to San Francisco to plead our case to upgrade our ratings through Moody's. We also looked at 4.4.416 Wellness. And it was, oh, so we've added mental health and update the legal references there. Also, some changes were made in procedures, or recommended changes in procedures. Nutrition guidelines are being updated. Healthy lifestyle added. Mental and emotional wellness was also added. And in Policy 4.9.4, student safety and health. Is that community involvement? And so there's assessment measures and BOP and life skills training. And I'm sorry, I don't remember what that is.
That is the, that's the curriculum that our teachers use in the different grade levels?
Yeah.
We have grade levels focused on in elementary, junior high, and high school.
Policy 2.104, that's Administrative Organizational Plan. And it's about following chain of command. And as we've seen recent years, sometimes things tend to go right to the state for issues rather than trying to resolve things at the lowest level possible. We also looked at Policy 8.1.101. I have to be able to read my notes. School credits and graduation. And we spent a bit of time on this. Updated 27 to 28 required credits. The collectives went from 6 to 5.5. And civic class was eliminated until 2020-something, which is kind of unfortunate. Was that done online in the past, or was it an in-person class, civics?
The civics test?
Test, yeah. It was just a test?
Yeah.
Well, lots of schools would have a class.
Okay. We also reviewed Policy 3.107, the Audit Committee. And that will be added to the board agenda to approve the Audit Committee. So in the past couple of years, it's been the members of the Budget, Finance, and Facilities Committee. Prior to that, it was Board Leadership years ago. Policy 7.6.600, equal opportunity employment. Utah Code has been added. Some minor changes regarding gender, identity, and sexual orientation have been done on there. Policy 9.100, the school year, 180 minimum school days, 990 instructional hours. And so updates have been adding Utah Code language updates. And the last two, 9.4.412, was emergency disaster. And that is involved with updating legal references. And the last one we looked at was 11.102, employee non-disclosure assurances. And we're not recommending any changes on that policy.
How long was that meeting?
About 20 minutes, was all.
We actually had the foundation fundraiser.
Board President, sorry. Board President, this is Arlene.
Go ahead, Arlene.
In my notes, I just wanted to make sure on 2.104, we did want to read that aloud as we have new board members. I want to make sure that that gets read aloud.
While you're pulling that up?
Yeah.
Can you talk about how you, which policies you look at? Is there like, is there like a rotating, like they're on a schedule? Or how do you choose which ones you go over?
Yeah, so we have a rotating schedule. We try to, the goal would be to have all the policies reviewed at least every five years. And then different departments get notified when there are different legal references or different laws that come out after a legislative session. And then we will update those accordingly. So sometimes some skip. You know, we update them more frequently, but the goal is every five years. Okay? Thanks.
Okay, so Policy 2.104, Administrative Organization Plan. To facilitate administrative procedures, decision should be made at the local operational level. In establishing organizational plans or procedures, the superintendent ensures the free and open flow of ideas and assistance among personnel at every level. Although it is the desire of the Board of Education to maintain an open-door policy, the board strongly recommends that persons with concerns pertaining to the business of the district first try to resolve those concerns at the level most proximate to the concern. Administrators and supervisors should be given an opportunity to resolve those concerns within their area of responsibility before seeking a remedy from the Board of Education. The organizational format for the district establishes the framework for administration, lines of authority, and responsibility. Each school is encouraged to develop the educational program most appropriate within the framework of district policies. Thank you for the reminder, Arlene.
You're welcome.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions? And you'll see these on the board packet coming out this month. And so now we'll move on. We have added one more committee report or board report. And Board Member Zundle represents our district on the OTEC Board of Trustees. So she has reports she'll be sharing.
We just met this last week. We meet every other month, I believe, is the schedule. And we met last week, and they announced, they had some students from the OTC go to the Skills USA nationally. And they actually had, took the gold winner in cosmetology, Holden Matthews. And then they had the bronze winner in barbering, who was Elizabeth Canales? Is that how I would say it? And then they had a group of three students that took 16th place nationally for the welding team. And so I thought that was good to take note of. And let me see if I can get back to my notes. Then President Taggart announced his president's awards. And there was one that I wanted to make mention of because I believe we work with her through our high schools. And that is Emily Goddard, our high school liaison, I mean, the high school liaison for OTEC. She got the president's community award this year. We, they approved, we approved their fiscal year '26 Strategic Plan Objectives and Strategies. And I can get you a copy of that. I'm sure you can find it on the website. If you wanted to look at it and can't find it, let me know. And then also, we did an approval of the projects list, capital projects list for fiscal year '27. That, they have very little funding for, lots of need, a little bit of funding. So we'll see how that works out. In this meeting, there are just a few items that we cover actually in the meeting on the agenda. And then down at the bottom, it says Information/Discussion. And there is just documents and reports for trustee members that we can look at. And then if we have any questions, we can ask them at that meeting, but they're not really discussed at the meeting. And I really like that because there's lots of things, especially as new on the Board of Trustees over there. It gives me a lot of background knowledge on some things. Like, we get their outcome report, their custom fit report, their return on investment report, student success, I mean, student services survey report, you know, different things like that. They always have something different on that list. So I can go and look and read those documents and get that background knowledge. But it doesn't necessarily have to be a meeting on it. Unless I have questions, I can, I'm free to ask questions anytime during the meeting on those. Anyway, that's the report. They are doing great. Thank you.
You have a question?
Sure. I hope I can answer it.
Whoa, hopefully. Okay, so all of those students that got all those awards, which is so awesome. Do we know, were those OTEC students or just their students in general? Are OTEC, hi?
They're OTEC. They're OTEC High School. They're Ogden Weaver Technical College students. They were all adults.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Jennifer? Okay, now we'll move on to information items. And we'll invite Bren Martin up for the Ogden School Foundation Report.
Okay, so in your packet, you'll have my presentation. But I gave you all a hard copy of our beautiful new annual reports we're super excited about, which I have to say, Board Member John helped us create these when he was on the foundation. So we're grateful. And so as we kick off a new school year, we also just wanted to highlight kind of some of the great things that happened in the foundation last school year. Just kind of as an overview reminder, the foundation operates as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit with our own Board of Volunteers. And our purpose and mission is to provide educational enhancement opportunities for Ogden School District students. And we have five areas of focus: literacy, math, and science; the arts, technology, and student and staff well-being. And kind of our why that we really tried to lean into this year as we were speaking with community members is that the Ogden of tomorrow begins in our schools today. And really just saying, if you want to invest in our community, start in our schools. And how we've done that was, we have a, I could go on forever to talk about this. But I pulled out a few things to talk about our impact from last school year. So kind of looking broadly, we have our district projects where a district employee can come and ask for a partnership or funds. And so these are the ones that we funded last school year. So we partnered with the district as well as wrote a ramp grant with the district for the Ben Lomond High School Auditorium. We partnered with Corey Jensen, the district science specialist, and got this. It's the bottom black, it's a big inflatable planetarium. But not only does it do like solar system, but we have, he's working on doing different science lessons. So we have animals. We also got him a 360-degree camera so he can go shoot in different workplaces and then do like virtual tours of workplaces within our community of people that look like our students working in these jobs trying to increase STEM. So we're really excited about that. Our board members got to have a sixth-grade science lesson in it a couple weeks ago. It was really awesome. And we did our Tleifalinkus Griner Excellence in Teaching Awards. So this is a peer-nominated, community-nominated award for one teacher per school. They get a $500 check that's just for them, not their classroom, and just recognizing our excellent educators. And then we partner with the district and Adam's team on our early literacy night each year. And so we were happy to be able to provide the funding for the author fee as well as purchasing books so that every first grader got to take home a book. Whoops, whoa, we skipped to the very end. And so getting a little bit more granular, so district into school priorities. Each school has an opportunity to write a grant through the foundation. Our elementary schools can write up to 5,000, secondary schools 7,500. And we purchased things this year, like technology upgrades for our media centers, book vending machines that, for take-home books for positive behavior, family engagement night support, large auditorium screen, Clark Planetarium field trips for strong attendance, student cellphone pouches, and then one-school-one-book reading initiatives are just a few. Then getting even more granular, and this is kind of what we feel like is the meat and potatoes of what we do, how we can hopefully impact every student. of what we do, how we can hopefully impact every student is a classroom grant. So we provide a $1,200 grant to every educator in the district. And we once again had a new record funding over 1,130 grants, equalling over $840,000 going into our classrooms. We partner with the Donors Choose program. So teachers can put on a request there. And if there's a match, we can stretch those dollars to be 2,400 per teacher. And so part of that 840 is the matching dollars we were able to get. And then in partnership with the district and a lot of philanthropic support, Odyssey Center, Family Center was open, but this last school year, we were able to open our three high school teen centers with over 3,750 visits for the school year. So we're just so excited about the growth and the support that's happening there. And our students are learning about those. And as a foundation continuing to find monetary in-kind and just community support for those. There's questions, you can interrupt me as I'm going through. Yeah.
On the Donors Choose, 840,000 is what went in the classroom? And how much came from Donors Choose with that?
So we funded, so about 300, just a little over 350,000 came from the foundation dollars. And then the rest was from Donors Choose. Yeah, so we love Donors Choose. And I should say, if there's a project that's not, or something that's wanted that's not on Donors Choose or like busing for a field trip, we have a separate form that teachers can still access that. If it's not on Donors Choose, they just don't get the matching dollars. And then just continuing to support our Market Star Student Resource Center, again with monetary in-kind donations, a lot of volunteers putting together packs and things for our students. And we were able to distribute over 17,000 items for students and families through the center. All that we do, and I said this all the time, is only possible because of our partnerships. And so just a few key partnerships from this last year. We did our Weber State College Bound event again. And that's where we take every fifth grader up to Weber State's campus and have them start thinking not if I can go to college, but when, that this is possible for me. New this year, we worked with their ambassadors and we had set up in different places in the ballroom. We had professors doing hands-on experiments and building, I don't know, aquariums? What is it called? Hupland? Thank you. Yes, not aquariums, land. And lots of, we did student panels and the students asked questions like, what are you studying? How, how do you pay for food? Like all of that kind of stuff. So it was really great. And then took them to the Weber State basketball game. Again, partnered with Special Olympics of Utah for our Unified Sports Program, which we love. And I will send out an invite through Nalita. But that, we have our soccer tournament coming up on the 26th, Wednesday, the 26th. So we love that partnership. This year, we were selected as one of the five community nonprofits for the Light the World Giving Machines at Christmas Village. And the details are on page 12. But we got over 600 pairs of shoes donated, over 1,100 early reader books, over 300 pairs of headphones for individual learning, over 400 art supplies, like art supply kits, and over 117 acoustic guitars donated to our students through this. So we're really excited. We have to have those all purchased by December 1st. So we're just working with our team to get those out. And the Kind Fund through Young Automotive Group and our Young Caring for Our Young Foundation is a really important partnership that we have. They do $150 per student of new clothing. And so when we reported this, and this doesn't count everything through the summer and that's coming through the new school year, but they've helped clothe over 1,750 of our students, equalling over $288,000. So we're really grateful for them. And then finally, I just want to talk about the Ron McBride Foundation. And they provide grant funding for our after-school programs. So this new school year, they'll be providing grants for 10 of our schools. Last year it was nine. And then the foundation does a three, a three-to-one match on those as well. So we love being able to help provide great after-school programs in our schools. And that's really school-driven. They submit the grant, they submit what they want their after-school program to look like.
Could I ask you a quick question to back up a little bit? On the Kind Fund for school clothing, what is the process for a student to go through? I work at the YCC Family Crisis Center and I work with clients all the time that are leaving domestic violence situations and they have children and they're like, we don't have school clothes, we don't have nothing. So would that be a good opportunity for me to have them refer back to their administrators?
Yes, administrators, counselors, or their SSM member, student success member. But the admin would know.
Okay.
So that's, that could be through the Kind Fund or we can also get them items through the Market Star Student Resource Center.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Yeah.
Then fundraising events, this is a big part of how we raise our money to be able to fund these things. So we have our Fall Author Event last year with Rudus Sepedes, which was inspiring. She was incredible and so generous and just the best human. So we loved having her. We're excited about this year, Si Montgomery. We've partnered a lot with our, again, district librarians and district science specialists. And we're doing lots of animal learning, getting ready because she's a naturalist and will talks about the lessons we can learn from animals. So that is coming up. Then we have a Raptors Night Event that was just two weeks ago and then a golf tournament. And so again, this is just a way for our community to engage and give back. And then on the back, it's kind of some fast facts, but I just wanted to highlight the bottom left corner. So we went through and counted and we have 63 foundation run or supported programs throughout the school year. So always busy, but a lot of great things happening that we love to be involved in and hopefully help our students realize their success, whether that's helping them have the basic needs to take advantage of opportunities or to give them opportunities they wouldn't have access to. So, and then you can see the last page, our sticky note page has a few other beyond the basics fast facts too of different things that we did. But just want to say thank you to our outgoing board members. And so you're all aware, Tammy Olson, who is the Young Caring for Our Young Foundation Director, retired. And then Ryan Wilcox, Kathy Wood, and Nozabriski hit their term limits. And so we're so grateful to them and saying thanks to them next time you see them. And then our new board members, we have Kelly Belknap, who is the new director of the Young Caring for Our Young Foundation, Tanner Beckley, Mark Spence, and Patrick Munson coming on board. And then just also a big thank you to Eric Hall, who was our great board president last year. And welcome to Jake Goodell, who will be our president for this year. But just overall, great year, great things that we're able to do for our students. And we're, we love being able to help hopefully try to fill any gaps and work with all of you. We're excited this year. We're working very closely with Luke and his team along with Voices for Utah Children on the great things to come with the Ogden Opportunity Center. So looking, working lockstep with the district on that. And yeah, any questions for me?
I have a question. Just finding, thank you Bryn for the presentation. I really appreciate it. I'm not sure if you're going to have this information or not, but with the situation that we have across the nation, just with tapping into resources, have we seen a decline with our Hispanic Latino population, specifically Market Star getting assistance? With other nonprofits, they have noticed that those resources haven't been tapped into as much as they had seen. I was just wondering if you have any numbers or just have an idea of what that is doing?
I don't have a number. I can all, we have a dashboard where I can pull all of that. So I can get all of that data for you and get that sent out. I know we've seen an increase in utilization already this school year within our support centers. But I don't, I don't have the breakout of demographics in front of me. So I can get that to you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I was just going to say thanks Bryn. Got to talk to our board two weeks ago, three, two weeks ago? But just unreal to have this, this kind of support in a district our size with the board they have. It's really, it's really unbelievable. I kind of, I'll spare the analogy I used with your board, but well, I'm not, I'm not going to use it. But the, the, just, just filling the gaps, right? I mean, we have our systems and we have the things that we provide teachers and they have their basics and they have, you know, the, the system that we have in place. But you guys really fill and water those dry spots around the district that really need it and help the kids that really need it and support the communities and the teachers to have extra things that they otherwise, you know, would probably go spend their own money on, you know, be up and beyond to be innovative. So just, you know, kudos to you for being such a great leader, all by being a new mom, keeping this whole thing rolling. You know what I mean? It's just really, you're really great at your job and you do such a good job with your board and such a bought-in board. And really like I, I spend an hour there, just they ask so many good questions and they're really interested in what we're doing, what we're doing to help kids and they're just thoroughly invested in our community. So just kudos to you for, for all you do. And this is not normal. You know, this is a high-level functioning foundation that really, really goes the extra mile to support our kids and just really proud of you. So thank you. Yep.
I just wanted to ask one question and echo everything else that's been said that you're awesome. And you did such a great job. So thank you for all of this information. I just was curious with the board, what is their commitment? Like, do they have terms? Like, what does that look like for, for them?
Yeah, so we're a volunteer board. And we have a process, we open it up usually January, February, where people can be nominated. We do a vetting, we meet one-on-one to make sure they feel comfortable with what they're committing to. It's a three-year term, opportunity to extend for two terms. And at that point, if you go into like vice president, president, past president, that can extend you three more years. So someone could stay on for nine years. Noel kind of did his six years and then got asked to come into leadership. We do have in our policies that you have to be off for a year after you've done your two terms. And then there is an opportunity for you to come back on if you would like. So we have some longtime board members like Suzanne Lindquist and Pam Nelson came back on who have done that, but it's a three-year term for two, for two terms.
And how many board members do you have?
We have a max of 30, kind of fluctuate between 25 and 30. And then we have two ex officio members from the district and very non-voting members. So Jer and Ken Crawford serve in those positions.
Very cool. Okay. Well, thank you to all of them. That's, yeah, that's a ton of work and we really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you Bryn.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll hear from our Assistant Superintendent on accreditation process.
Awesome. Excited to be here. So thank you for allowing me to share a little bit about the upcoming system-wide accreditation that will happen in November of this year. It is a crucial process that we've used to not only guide us through continuous improvement, but also really validates a lot of the great things that are happening here in Ogden. So we're excited about that. Let me see that. Why is it not advancing here? There we go. Okay. As I mentioned, at its core, accreditation is a framework, comprehensive framework that really looks at how schools and districts are performing. It's not just an internal process. It's actually a really rigorous process with external evaluators. So Cognia, which is a nongovernmental nonprofit organization made up of educators, is our, the organization that oversees our accreditation process. And they will bring about 10 individuals here in November that are experts, both educationally within the state and then out of the state. But it really, it's rigorous and we'll get into that. It's a standard-based process that looks at ongoing improvement. That includes, like I said, the third-party professionals that review and provide feedback. There's three phases to a system-wide accreditation process. That first phase is a reflection and an analysis phase. And then the engagement review where, like I said, that 10-member team will come and spend four days here on-site. And then there's a process, a progress and feedback phase where we'll get a very comprehensive report that we'll share with you from Cognia, from that review team, and then identify areas where we can improve and next steps to move forward. As you're aware, we have our strategic plan. And this infographic really paints a great picture with the Portrait of a Graduate at the Apex, connected with our three anchors, academics, positive behavior supports, and talent, talent development, connecting to our priorities, objectives, and goals. And we purposely, as you look a little deeper into this infographic, we actually intentionally placed systems accreditation as part of our strategic plan, knowing that we want to have some sort of accountability to what we say we're doing in our strategic initiatives and our strategic effort. And this provided that external review to come in and really validate and give us ideas where we can improve, maybe blind spots. But that is something critical to our strategic effort in Ogden. The last time that we did a systems accreditation was actually the first time that we had done it and it was five years ago. At that time, we were the second district, only the second district in the entire state who had gone through a system-wide accreditation, which was a great, great experience. Do you remember what was happening in 2020? That was the pandemic. So we had to pivot and do a virtual review. But similar, we had a team from Cognia who did a lot of things virtually. We provided a lot of evidence, as mentioned here. There are 31 standards as part of the accreditation process back in 2020. And there are 31 standards again now. I'm just looking behind President Wilson is our certificate of accreditation that we received five years ago. And each school has a similar certificate hanging in their, in their building.
Chad, real quick, is there still only two districts in the whole state or did they add a few?
I think there's, I think there's more. I think Canyons may have gone through. And there's a couple others that are jumping on. I know Iron School District, Iron County. And I believe To Willa is looking.
But systems accreditation is a big load on the district office. It's a, it's a ton of work. So I mean, it's, it's, it's very difficult to go through systems accreditation in this process because you end up doing, you're usually districts, so the other 36 districts or 37 districts, you maybe were going to touch on this.
No, you don't hear me.
They, they go school by school. So every single school is accredited individually. So there's a lot of work on the school. The school does the lifting for accreditation. I've been a part of that in another district. And then Davis shifted to systems accreditation. So this is a, this is a good thing for, for us. It, it looks at our whole system. It looks at it comprehensively, looks at all the schools too. But it takes a big burden off of the schools when you choose to go through systems accreditation. Little effort, more effort up here, but saves us some time at the school level because they don't have to prepare for their own accreditation.
Yeah, R277410 really is the board rule that, that requires secondary schools to be accredited. Elementary schools are exempt from that, but through systems accreditation, we've chosen to do that, which to Luke's point, being able to see all of our system, all of our schools, from our kindergarten programs, early literacy programs, up to, you know, the, the work that we're doing with Tech College and beyond through Portrait of a Graduate. So it is, we've taken that burden on the district as opposed to those secondary schools. But it really gives us a, a great in-depth analysis of, of how we're doing as a district. Some slight changes to the actual process. One, as I mentioned, they'll be on-site. But there are four key characteristics, culture of learning, leadership of learning, engagement of learning, and growth of learning. And there are standards. I'll, I'll show an example of one of the standards here next. But this is the process. We are, for the last year, we've been gathering some evidence. We just spent a lengthy amount of time kind of self-assessing ourselves, where we think we're at rating ourselves. we're at, rating ourselves on a rubric and scoring that. As part of the process, when that team is here, because they're bringing such a large team, I anticipate every school having a visit, which will include multiple classroom observations, focus groups of not only students, but parents, community members, teachers. And I'll touch on board interviews here shortly as well. You'll have an opportunity to meet with accreditation team and, and have a little interview. And then obviously the scoring. This, I know it's super hard to read and I can share these standards with you, but this is just from that key characteristic of engagement of learning. So you see the standard there, standard number 22, instruction is monitored and adjusted to advance and deepen individual, individual learner's knowledge and understanding of the curriculum, right? So that's the standard. Then it gives that rubric, it's a four-point rubric where we go in and we self-assess ourselves, but then this team will come in and, and look to see what evidence we have and how we've analyzed it to where, if they agree with our rating. There's different elements and then some sample evidence of, of what this might be that we're collecting and presenting to this team. So evidence collection is really at the heart of accreditation, being able to share not just what we're doing, how we're doing it and the data to back it up. So it starts with these four data sources. Documentation, so things like our strategic plan, policies and procedures, our school's success plans. Observations, so we've done Elliott observations, which are those classroom observations, see how students are responding to instruction and what we see as we're in the classroom, teacher evaluations. And then we have surveys, some of that's through our work with EAB where we've gone out and we've held focus groups and done district-wide surveys, how we've analyzed that. Then performance, our academic, non-academic performance that, you know, you've seen in like the state of the district report, our actual metrics of how we're doing, those progress indicators. So it starts with that data. A lot of times it's raw data. Then we kind of move into that analysis where we try and get that into a phase where it's useful information. What are some of those findings through that analysis? And then ultimately the evidence is presented in a way that is kind of a theory of action. Here's the evidence, here's how we've collected it, here's how we've analyzed it, here's what it means to an outside evaluator, and here's our ongoing theory of action. If we do X, we believe that we'll get this result. This, just in summary, is that they, they obviously spending four days here don't have enough time to go through everything. So that's, shout out, Luke kind of alluded to this, but shout out to these team members back here. This is a huge lift for them to not only access the data, but then take time to analyze the data, put it in useful format, synthesize it. And so they are, they are working tirelessly on that and just, just, I'm grateful for each of them for, for the work that they're doing. You'll see during that accreditation visit and we'll certainly share all of the evidence and information that we've collected, just how massive of lift this is and just, this is a great team that's, that's doing that, that heavy lift. The five steps just to that data analysis, so, you know, first, understanding the purpose of our analysis, identifying and evaluating, weighting that, that data source, cleaning it up, so like I said, it's usable, analyzing it and then interpreting those, those findings. The purpose of our analysis is to find evidence to evaluate our school district against those standards and key characteristics. So timeline, I mentioned that November, but we actually started this second process about a year ago. So in November 2025, or excuse me, a year ago, 2024, we made that decision, sorry, that should say 2024. We, we started that process of, okay, we're going to do this again, we'll have a review in a year. What does that mean? Mapped it out, everything from here are the new standards, here are the key characteristics, what role are we going to take, who's going to support us in this? We took a deep dive into the standards in one of our leader learning administrator meetings in January of this year. We collected that information, revisited some of that, started to analyze our findings, did a deep data dive in anchor leadership, started to pull out some of those, those findings. Obviously, the school leadership team retreat in May was helpful. Elliott recertifications, this one, we were pleasantly surprised. We thought this year all administrators would have to be recertified in Elliott, but we have another year for that, so that, that is helpful. We're here as a school board presentation to show this information.
What does Elliott stand for?
Okay, Elliott. It's, it refers to the environments.
Learning environment observation.
Effective, effective?
Learning.
Okay, effective learning, environments, observation tool. And really what it is, when you do an Elliott observation, as opposed to seeing what the teacher is doing, obviously that's a component, you're really looking at the different environments of what the student is doing at that time. So it's, it's really awesome. Yeah. I think there's seven environments and it's, it's rated. And what's nice, because we're doing it school-wide, system-wide, we have obviously district-wide data, but Elliott is part of what Cognia looks at, so they have national data that they can compare how we're doing with all the other districts and systems that they accredit across the nation. So it's, it's really fun to see that. Yeah, great question. In October, we will be finalizing the evidence and uploading that into the database and then there will be some board interviews. So I did mention this with the superintendent, our lead evaluator from Cognia has asked, you know, knowing that there are public rules for quorums, that they would be able to do maybe small group interviews with, you know, a couple of you virtually, all of you if you'd like to at some point, so we can certainly work with President Wilson and superintendent on that. And I think we'll be touching base on this in some of the upcoming committee meetings, what those interview questions will look like, what's expected of you. It's, it's pretty painless, but it gives them a great idea of how this governing board functions and in relation to the school district. So it's a great opportunity as well. And then they will be here in November. So this is kind of our tentative timeline. October will be those interviews. They will arrive on Sunday, the 2nd, and then we'll hit the ground running on Monday, the 3rd. We'll sell, share invites to all of you for, for these. If you can make it, would love to have you. That first day will be a district presentation led by the superintendent and anchor leadership to give this team an overview of Ogden School District, some of the things we're proud of, some of the things we're working on, even identifying some of our known gaps, but kind of give them the lay of the land. And then I've served as has Adam and Sarah on accreditation teams myself, and, and they put in long days. So they will spend the entire day here in our district, whether it's on campus or at schools, and then they will go back to their hotel or a workspace and work into the evening about what have they seen, what have they heard, what evidence have they collected? And they'll do that each night. And then starting on, on the 4th and the 5th, they'll spend virtually all day out in our schools, talking with teachers, students, parents and doing classroom observations. And then on Thursday, the 6th in the morning, I'd also maybe highlight that as a day if you can make it in the morning, that team will give us some initial feedback and findings. We won't get the official large report for a couple months after, but, but they'll give us an initial kind of what they experienced, what they saw, which is a great opportunity if you can, if you can make it. So we'll, we'll give you the time and place on that. This is language directly from our strategic plan. It, meaning accreditation, is an important process that guarantees that no matter where a student lives or where they go to school in Ogden, they have access to high-quality education. That's our ultimate goal through our strategic plan and through all of your efforts and our efforts is to provide that high level of education. And accreditation is that tool for us, that mechanism to really monitor, hold us accountable, give us some information about validation of what we're doing and also areas to continuously improve. So that is an overview of the upcoming accreditation.
I have a question. So when the Cognia team visits school, does anyone from the district accompany them or are they just going to do their thing?
We'll, we'll make sure it's all arranged in terms of, and all the schools will know, they'll have a scheduled conference room set up. So typically we'll have a greeter at the school. Myself, I'm planning on accompanying as many as I can, just to be adjacent to them if they have any needs, maybe question or something. But for the most part, we kind of stay out of their way. They'll get an overview of the, the building, map of the building from the principal. But, but really they're kind of on their own and they go in and they talk to whoever they want. I mean, they're, they're not disruptive by any means, but they will do a, a deep analysis. Yep.
Who is Cognia? You said that you've served on some of them and Adam has as well. Like, who is it as an organization? Where do they come from? What's their background and why do we choose them? And are they the only ones that do accreditation?
Oh man, I think there's a variety of, of accrediting bodies, agencies, and they've, their names have changed before. Cognia used to be Advanced Ed. There are other, I don't, I don't know how many, but there are regional ones. I know the state has worked, the State Board of Education has worked closely to kind of zero in. I think, I, I don't know if we can actually choose. I think the state has kind of designated Cognia as our accrediting agency.
That's dictated by the State Board of Education for that.
But I'll double check that, I'll follow up. Cognia is, I don't know where they're out of. Our lead evaluator currently lives in Kansas, but they're mostly made up of either current administrators or teachers or specialists or retired administrators or specialists. They're a nonprofit, non-governmental organization and Cognia actually does not only national but international accreditation as well.
As a non-governmental organization, do they get their funding from a government organization or does their funding come purely from what we pay them for the work that they do?
I know we pay some. It's not a great amount. It's a per-site cost. I want to say it's about $1,400.
I think that was in the presentation.
Yeah. But I don't know if they get other funding sources or if it's just purely the, the agencies that are going through accreditation.
Well, their website, they don't just do accreditation, they do all kinds of things, education to help different education agencies, I guess I should say.
And I'll say that the State Board doesn't have a direct contact with, contract with Cognia, but they do, they, they support and want you to contract with Cognia, they recommend Cognia. So most every, like Davis District, Granite District, I mean, most districts that I'm familiar with use Cognia for, for their accreditation services. It's just, I think they're really familiar with Utah and aligned with, with what we're doing here and so that's just where most people go. And you said not all districts do accreditation. Why, do you know why other districts do? Not systems accreditation. All districts have to go through accreditation, all the secondary schools. So all, all just, every secondary school in the state has to be accredited, everybody. But we just choose to do systems accreditation to take the load off of those schools. So we take that on here and then we decide to, if we're, if we're doing this, let's look at our whole system. Let's open ourselves up and really look at everything that we're doing K to 12 and, and get a really good snapshot and a picture if we're going to go through the process. So systems accreditation is a higher level of accreditation really than just having secondary schools do that. It's looking at a broader picture.
It's similar, but imagine like Ben Loman High School or Ogden High School would go through this same process, but just at their, at their level, which is a lot of work and it gives a snapshot of that school, whereas this is kind of the best of both worlds. They will, we'll do a deep dive in Ogden High and Ben Loman and Highland, but also how the system is functioning as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Looks like they're based out of Georgia and been around since 1895. Not the same people, but. Any other questions for Chad?
So I'll follow up with some of those answers as well as getting Alita and superintendent the schedule. Once we have it finalized, I meet now bi-weekly with our lead evaluator and so we'll, we'll get all of those details and get some interviews set up for you guys and it'll be great.
And Carleen, has your hand up?
Hello. Yes, from people present. Chad, I was just curious, you said our last one was in 2020, is that correct?
Correct.
Do we have a report of those findings and could we get that? I'd just like to know what the baseline is and how we've improved and then what to expect for this one. I know it probably will be a little different because that was virtually back in 2020, but now they'll be onsite, but it would be nice for the board to have what their findings were.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
I was going to follow up on that too. Like, can, can that Elliott data be shared too? Just even raw data on that? Just, I'm just curious what that looks like and, and how that looks school, school by school.
I mean, we could even do some sort of presentation about what that looks like even in a work session in terms of the different environments and how we incorporate into our talent development anchor.
I'll say a fun little story about accreditation too. So Josh Bell, who's our principal at George Washington, was on the accreditation team that came out and visited Ogden back in 2020. And through that, we kind of built a relationship with Josh. He was super impressed with what we were doing. He was like, what a, this is a really good culture you guys have going here. Like, tell me more about this. And a few years later, he reached out to me as I entered into this super tendency and Josh ended up joining our team. But it all started with him being on the accreditation team with Cognia, when he, when he came out here to want to join our district and what he saw when he went through the visit. He just liked what he saw, it opened his eyes. Not, not that he had anything bad to say, he was in Salt Lake District, he didn't, he just said, this is something I really would like to be a part of. And we now have a really great principal and total education leader in Joshua Bell. So sometimes that, that stuff happens too. We did quite well in the previous, you know, it was a little different. Had a lot of big, big victories in our previous accreditation and scored quite, quite high.
Yeah, the scoring has, has changed a little bit.
It'll be a little bit different on where it comes in, but we've done a lot of good things since then and, and working hard on evidence. So I, I expect this to be a really positive experience and it'll be awesome. And we'll learn some things too, that we can do better. And that's always a, that's also a positive.
Does anyone have any discussion items they would like to bring up? So let's connect. One thing I do want to mention, and I don't know when the timeline is for early bird registering for National School Board Association Conference in April. Alita, do you remember the date?
The dates for the conference are April 10th to the 12th?
Yep.
Yeah. It's a week later.
A little later.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't ruin your spring break or make your spring break.
I had a question about travel and I don't, I'm sure we have a policy somewhere about it, but in an effort to be fiscally responsible, would we ever like have more than one board member to a room? Like, is, are there ways that we can make travel more affordable? Like, I don't want to be a strain on the district when we do, you know, when we do have these opportunities to go to these conferences. So do we have a policy on more than one of us being in a room?
I think so. We have a travel policy, but it doesn't address that. So if you wanted to and you're comfortable with that, I don't know why that would be a problem, but there's nothing that requires it.
I just wanted to suggest that because as someone who is frugal and wants to be mindful of, because I know that it gets pricey for us to, to go to these, I am happy to room with a board member if it would. So just throwing that out there with a theme board member. Don't want any scandal out there.
Did you find a date?
Okay. But I, you know, the sooner that we know who's attending, the better. You can make them get on and start reserving, you know.
Which does- Which does help with pricing as well, because sometimes they pick the, they pick the cheaper hotels first, and then you get priced out of those. And you can also be sometimes at the one where the conference is at, which is nice.
Okay. So we could set up our own timeline to...
Decide. Because it's not free to cancel, yeah.
San Antonio. Atlanta was this year. Orlando was the, New Orleans was the year before. So do any other board members have anything for, let's connect.
I do.
Okay, Arlene.
Hi. I wanted to share a couple of items, events that are coming up. If you are familiar with the Weber County Women Voters, we are doing a community civic family festival on Saturday, September 27th, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Fort Buena Ventura. And this organization is nonpartisan. They organize to work to protect and expand voting rights and ensure that everyone is represented in our democracy. They also empower voters and defend democracy through advocacy, education, and litigation at the local, state, and national level. I wanted to share this because we are hoping that we can get many students there just to engage in civic activity from K through 12. It's going to be very family-friendly. I wanted the board to be aware of that.
But, Arlene, what are the times on that?
2:00 to 6:00 p.m. on September 27th.
And Arlene Jerr got those flyers today, and he's kicking them out.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that. This second event is near and dear to my heart, the Agoda Los Montes in Ogden. That's going to be Saturday, October 11th, at the Ogden Amphitheater from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. As always, we showcase artwork from our amazing Ogden students. This year's theme is Roots, seeing the Bridge of Love, by Ixtes de Cantan, Un Puente de Amor. We are also going to have performances by our Ben Loman Back Typer, our Ben Loman Dance Company, and the Secondary Mariachi Group. So we look forward to that. In addition to that event, Amber and I are going to have a booth there. It's our dress for success, where we provide complimentary clauses for students of new and gently used professional clothing that they may need for employment or educational interviews. And I would love to have any volunteers to help with that booth. But I just wanted to provide that information to the board.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thanks. Anything else, Arlene?
Nope, thank you.
Stacy?
I just wanted to make the board aware, in case anyone wasn't following along. I know that we did do our due diligence with Taylor Canyon. There is an advocacy group that has been started. And so anyone who's just kind of interested in seeing what's unfolding there, because I know that some of us had gotten questions about that decision-making process. And I do think, you know, we did our part as a school board, and now it's working its way through the next step in that process. But just if we want to stay informed and engaged with what's happening, I know that they had a group that went to the amphitheater on Tuesday night and then attended the city council meeting. So I don't know the outcome of that. But I do, I did see that Mayor Nadolsky said, we, you know, it's not completely off the table. And so again, that's, it's out of our hands, but I just, I feel like it is, it is part of our role to just stay informed if people ask us questions.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, actually, Stacy. So one thing, just for the good of the board and anybody listening. So this, we did send in our 90-day notice, saying has filed that with the city. They did reach back out and say, hey, we really want to make sure we're doing some due diligence here. We want to get some feedback from the community. We want to do, they're working on a few studies where they're looking at usage very closely in park space across the city. They want to get some input from the community members on kind of what some ideas may be. So we, they just said, hey, can we kind of have some, a little bit open-ended time here within reason to be able to work through some processes that we want to go through? And, you know, we're not, of course, we're going to work with them as they try to do their due diligence and work through that. So he was able to, the mayor was able to say that in the council meeting, if you watched, just to kind of let people know, yeah, we're going to be going through a process. We're going to be looking at this really closely, but we may need a little bit more time. We emailed the school district, asked for that. They were very supportive. So just so you know, there's, there is that 90-day time. That's the law. It's the minimum. That doesn't mean that we are like, nope, 90 days, you're done. That means we can work with people. So of course, we're going to do that. So, thanks.
I just want to add on to that. I'm very grateful to hear that the city is looking to that and talking to the community, because I know our community got together, I think it was last Saturday. I wasn't able to attend that, but I know that they are definitely very passionate about that property. And so I'm looking forward to seeing how things turn out.
Okay, thank you. Just one last thing for Arlene and Amber. This report that we received the hard copy from the foundation, I will put that in your mailbox if you stop by any time and pick that up.
Yes. So I'll send out an email, but if I can get responses to that soon, so we can see if we fill the table, and if not, so I can offer both spots out. It is 10 spots on the table. I'll author.
Can you check out my artwork and my craft in Turtle Towns? We'll see how it turns out.
Okay, having reached the end of our agenda, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.